All right. It's 5:30 on November 20th, 2023. We'll call this council meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call.
Carmen?
Present.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
Kreener?
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the agenda. Number two, approval of claims. Number three, approval of minutes from November 6th, 2023. Number four, approval of minutes from November 13th, 2023, special meeting. Number five, approval of minutes from November 15th, 2023, special meeting. Number six, approval of special Class C retail alcohol license, beer and wine with outdoor service to Fat Tees Cafe LLC. Number seven, approval of Class C retail alcohol license to Big Daddy Hideaway Corp., DBA Sweeney's Lounge. And the last one, number eight, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Bam Sam Jam Rentals LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Staff report. Do we have a public works from Nate?
I kind of do.
Okay.
So he said the Seventh Street project should be mostly wrapped up by the end of the week until spring. They have a little bit of dirt work to do yet before the 24th, which was the fall end date of the contract. Memers were here last week on Thursday and Friday to put in the new sanitary sewer pipe and structures on the 12th Avenue project. This is part of the findings from the cleaning and televising that were done this past summer with CIT. The bottom of the pipe was in a very bad shape as well as the structures. The street department put out the planter, the planters back out downtown last Thursday, and there are a few left that businesses did not want to put back out. We'll have to decide what they want to do with them in the spring. Not sure if you guys also noticed, they did put up a new Christmas ornaments on the highway as well.
Thank you. Police report, chief?
Only thing to share at this time is they did go ahead and interview a candidate, and that went well.
Good. Good. All right. Thank you. Administration?
Um, who else? Busy working on budget. We went to budget training last week. There'll be more, like, there will most likely be an impact on the revenues. We probably won't know the extent of it until Christmas, but we'll keep you updated as soon as we have more firm numbers. We're still waiting on the budget from three departments. Also, the budget work session with the department heads is the 29th at 1:00.
What day of the week is that?
That's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? Okay. Any questions for Nikki on any of that? Number four, committee updates.
It's not a committee that's actually formed yet. Um, sorry. Um, but there is a new housing committee being formed for the ISU study that we applied for $10,000.
Yep.
And we got. And that's, so it, we're just looking at the questionnaire now, and that is starting to roll. It probably won't roll out until after Christmas because otherwise it'll get too caught up on holiday stuff.
Okay.
And the only other thing is not really a committee, but I gave a talk for Upper Explorer Land last Thursday about power purchase agreements and, and the energy efficiency.
Okay. Any other committees? Nope. Okay. Any comments from the audience? All right. We'll start with our normal business for tonight. Number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engagement agreement with Allers &amp; Cooney PC for 2023 amendment to the urban renewal plan.
And that's just to update the ones that are about to expire.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number two, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Martin Gardner Architecture to proceed with the renderings for the scene shop. And did you want to talk about that? Is that why you're here, Wendy, or did?
I can just answer any questions.
Okay.
Clarification.
Why don't you come on up?
If we're entering into an agreement at this point, where are we at with the fundraising? Has it, is this, wasn't that part of going into this, or is this?
The renderings that we're looking for at this point are more detailed. All we have right now are the line drawings or pencil drawings. We're looking for more detailed pictures. These would be interior and exterior pictures that would be more useful for fundraising. We have another fundraising meeting tomorrow night. They're going to kick off a capital fundraising campaign on January 1st, and that's a committee of both TCB and the Theater Commission. They have some plans in place as far as doing like pledge cards and similar show that the 24/7 has done, as well as some things with rentals. They have a quilt that they're going to donate, that's been donated. They're going to do a dinner theater that's already in the works with a play or a dinner theater on Tony and Tina's that's going to be in February. There are things in place that are going to roll out. This is just specific pictures that are more detailed so that it's not just line drawings that some people understand, but the general public won't.
And the fee is $5,000 for the interior, exterior?
Correct.
And then are you going to be doing the video fly-through for another $5,000?
No, that was not, that was something that the group decided as a whole was not necessary.
Okay.
So it's $5,000?
Basically, that, yeah, that's what, yeah.
So I make that motion.
Okay.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy?
Number three, abstract of votes as certified by the Board of Supervisors of Howard County and the State of Iowa.
Okay. So I'm required to read this. It's not so fun, kind of boring. So the following abstract of votes are signed by the Howard County Supervisors. The mayor's term is for two years, and the council members are for a four-year term. For the City of Cresco mayor position, David Brenno received 446 votes. The scattering was 13 votes, so the total vote was 459. We therefore declare David J. Brenno to be duly nominated for the office of City of Cresco Mayor. The city council at large position for Gary Kreener received 437 votes. The scattering was five votes with a total of 442 votes. We therefore declare that Gary Kreener to be duly nominated for the office of City of Cresco, City Council at Large. City Council Ward One scattering was 15 votes. Stan Passan received 12 votes, the total of 27 votes. We therefore declare Stan Passan to be duly nominated for the office of City of Cresco, City Council Ward One. City Council Ward Three, Jan Carmen received 136 votes. The scattering was three, total of 139 votes. We therefore declare Jan M. Carmen to be duly nominated for the office of City of Cresco, City Council Ward Three.
Okay. That's all there is to that?
Yep.
Right. And we'll probably slide in then what, the last December meeting?
Um, I think we're going to do it the first meeting.
First December meeting?
Yep. So we'll do everybody all at the same time.
Okay. All right.
So I have a motion on that?
No.
Okay.
Number four is the first reading of proposed ordinance number 507 to amend Chapter 155 in the City of Cresco Code of Ordinances pertaining to building permits. Below is a summary of ordinance number 507. A full copy of said ordinance may be obtained between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM. Weekdays, City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa 52136. Or at the city's website, www.cityofcresco.com. Chapter 155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, building permits. Purpose, adding the mayor to be authorized to examine, approve, and deny building permits in addition to the Public Works Director. Number two, severability clause. If any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Number three, when effective, the ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law. Did we talk briefly about not having the second and third reading?
Correct. So you approved the first reading of it, and then the next one is the resolution to waive the second and third.
So moved. Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
There it is. Number five, then, resolution waiving the second and third reading in consideration of ordinance number 507 pertaining to building permits.
So moved.
Second.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number six, approval of ordinance 507 pertaining to building permits.
So moved.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Number seven, request to waive late fees for the community chapel.
So they had a renter move in, and they didn't realize that they had a final bill still on their property, and so that's how they ended up with the late fee. So their request should be waived, I think it was $9.
What we've done in the past, um?
We've denied all of them.
That's what I thought.
How much was it for?
$9.
$9? Yeah. I make the motion.
To deny it or to approve it?
Approve.
No. We've never approved them in the past.
Denied.
Denied the $9?
Yes.
We don't want to set precedent.
I mean, you can, you can make the motion to approve if you want.
No, it won't be carried.
Huh?
No.
No?
We do give them the option for auto pay. They just don't want to do it. So if, basically, if we don't have the payment when we do the late fees, the late fees could apply to all of the ones that still are outstanding.
Just as an aside, I think that's a real argument for auto pay here.
Right.
You know, auto pay isn't that the city reaches in and grabs the money without telling you. You get the bill, you have a chance to review it. It just keeps you from getting into situations like this.
And with Front Desk, we do offer auto pay with debit or credit, as well as a checking or savings account.
So the item on the agenda was a request to waive the late fees for a community chapel. So is there any motion to do that?
Yeah.
No. So failed for lack of motion. Number eight, motion to set council meeting dates in January 2024 due to holidays. We talked about that last week. Our, Nikki and I did a little bit. So January 1st is a Monday, and you were thinking we would do them?
A lot of times, if it's a Monday holiday, we move it to Wednesday, but I really would not want it that Wednesday because it'll be closed Monday and Tuesday. So I was thinking the following Monday, and then move it to the second and fourth Monday.
I'm not going to be here from 8th through 13th.
So really, then, any date that week wouldn't matter. I guess you're going to be gone.
Yeah.
How about anybody else?
Just that I think the library meeting would be on the 8th, possibly.
And their meeting tonight as well.
Yeah. But the problem is if we meet on the 3rd, you're saying that...
It's going to be really tight because we'll be closed Monday, Tuesday, come in and have to get all the claims, process all the bills that have come in over the weekend, and us also pay all week.
Well, whatever.
And I mean, it doesn't have to be a Monday night.
No, it doesn't have to be Monday night.
You know, the 9th, 10th, the 11th. Richie said you're going all week, right?
To the 13th?
Yeah.
8th through the 13th. My schedule's wide open. I have no concerns.
I wouldn't want to go too much past the 8th because we really need to have council approve the claims before we mail them out.
Okay.
It's fine.
8th?
Yeah.
8th?
Yeah, I'm no good.
8th and 22nd? Because, yeah, there's five Mondays, five Tuesdays, five Wednesdays.
So the second and fourth, then?
Yeah, the 8th and the 22nd.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Number nine, discussion on the capital improvement plan.
I asked for this item. We approved it, but then I went back and I looked more carefully at the votes, and I'm, I'm just confused as to what the votes mean. And that's for two reasons. The first is, and Michelle, to her credit, Michelle and Nikki tried to put this in front of us. They said, what are the funding sources? But that didn't make us think about the buckets. For instance, you know, we voted as if the sewer plant is in competition with the streets. I mean, we ranked them, and we ranked them all together, but the fact of the matter is, we could go out and do the whole, everything the sewer plant wants right now, and it wouldn't affect the street budget at all. They're totally separate. So why are we voting for them in one long thing? There are really five buckets of funding, and they almost don't interact. Though some, but not much. The general obligation bonds, and we'll come back to that, the water bonds and reserves, the sewer bonds and reserves, cash, which is loosely the local option sales tax, plus our reserves, plus whatever we can find in the annual budget, and then donations. The donations bucket, the poor train, we vote as if it's in competition with the sewer and the streets and all that. If we really think it's going to be done by donations, it's in competition with the hospital, the school, the theater, the fitness center. So why are we even voting, ranking the train relative to the streets? So I think we should read, and as I say, there's some interaction, and certainly they all interact when you get to the tax, the tax levy.
Right.
Which is controlling, except for the water and sewer. It doesn't affect the tax levy, but sooner or later, people move out of town because they can't afford their sewer. So you got to be aware. The other thing that confused me when I looked at how people voted, including myself, I say, because I didn't have my spreadsheet set up to do this. We have, according to the auditor's last report, we can issue about $11.5 million worth of bonds. We currently have about $6.5 outstanding, so we can do $5 million more today. I think, I mean, I would like to see some of that held in reserve in case a tornado wipes out the town or whatever, you know, we get surprises. If we say that we want to push it, and we only want to leave 30% untouched for that, that means that we could issue a $2 million bond tomorrow, and the next time we could issue a $2 million bond is 2030. So we can get maybe four-ish, depending on how hard we want to push it, between now and 2030. And yet, the votes, and I'm, I'm including myself in this, I, I thought I was doing this right, but I screwed up. Between now and 2030, we're for $18 million, $18 million, $13 million, 8.5. In other words, we have no hope of doing it. Now, Dave and I were talking, and he said, well, you know, I voted for, this is a really good point. I voted for a couple because I thought they were equal-ish, and I would let the other people kind of make the decision. Good point. I don't see how that can possibly include all of them. So my suggestion, because I don't think, well, what Michelle has done is she ranked them, and then she made the split so that it was kind of legal. I, I think we should revote, and I think we should look at what's in competition with, 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 put all the sewer things together and say, which one are we going to do? Put all the streets, because there is no way legally that we can do all the streets between now and 2030, or realistically, even after that. So my suggestion is that we redo this, and we try to do it in buckets so that we can think logically about the, the projects that are in competition with each other, but not with others.
So if we had a session one night, for instance, if we had a short council meeting coming up, and maybe include it after that, or probably after that, or even a separate night, I guess doesn't matter, do you think that would be the best way to?
I think, well, first of all, we need to get Michelle and Nikki, because my division of things in the buckets may not be exactly correct. I didn't call up and ask them. So I looked to them, and the other thing that I don't know how to do, but, but Nikki smiled when I asked her she could do it, was how much do we spend every year on projects? Not on debt service, not on stuff we bonded for. I, I guess I don't have an appreciation, you know, every year we make a decision, we do some, but on average, when we're thinking about rating these, how much can we take out of the cash bucket every year? So I guess I would look to Nikki and Michelle and say, when can you do that, and what would be your timeline?
We should have that ready for you next Wednesday.
Oh, cool. See?
Part of the budget meeting.
Right.
So I, I think we should have that before we go ahead.
How, how long would you envision that would take for us to get together and talk about that?
I think it's going to be a relatively short conversation, as I say. It's, we're going to do, between now and 2030, we're going to do something on the order of the fitness center plus one or two streets. That's it. You can't vote for any more than that, or three or four streets if you let the center crumble. So I think it's going to be a short conversation.
Okay. So I guess let's talk about each meeting as they come, and we can maybe set aside a work session afterwards just to talk about that.
Okay.
Have you seen at all what we're talking about? The, okay, it's a list of, what did we do it, about three years ago, four years ago? We asked?
Two years ago.
Just two? Okay.
No, it was three years ago.
A list of projects that we know we have to do, and it's painting the train, it's fixing streets, things like that.
Everything over $100,000?
$50,000, $50,000 or $100,000. And what did the total number come to?
Must be over $50,000, because here's one for 82.
Yeah. I think it came up to $40 million, $50 million, which is...
A lot more the money than we have.
Yeah, and we'll have for a while, so I don't know if maybe you and Stan want to sit down one afternoon in here one morning and just kind of make him, maybe give him a copy and...
Well, I can give him a copy right now, and then we, I'd be happy to explain the budget behind it.
And I think a lot of these figures that, that they show are going to be obsolete by the time we get to it anyway.
Sure.
Concrete pricing and materials.
And budget.
But help me through this now. I mean, these are, I thought were projects that each one of our managers came forward with, and this was their project.
Correct.
So, I mean, we voted on them as how important they were to us. Now it looks like, you know, we're, we want to change the vote.
Not necessarily, no.
But it does look like that. I mean, it, it does.
But we voted, two problems. Number one, we all voted for more, many more projects than we can fund in the GO bucket.
But then what we should have done, Amy, at that time when they put their projects in, we should have said, hey, wait a minute here, we can't do this huge list, because a lot of times when they bring their projects forward, they're basically giving us their, their, their list.
Sure.
And we aren't able to say to them, hey, this is, maybe this project we can do this year, or maybe three years from now, but I mean, it's the same thing like when they want a loader or a truck, and we're looking at it just because every nine years they order a truck, but it doesn't mean if they don't put no miles on it, we should be buying a new truck, just to buy a truck.
Right. I agree.
So I mean, that's how I look at it, is this is where this list was while born. If we were going to go back, then we go back to them and say, okay, wait a minute here, redo your list, then bring them forward to us, because then, that's how I think it should be done, is go back and say, hey, wait a minute here, we looked at this, we can't do this the way we looked at it, because otherwise, we're just going to search this, and then certain projects are going to move forward.
I'm not averse to having, having them, and in some sense, they did that, and in some, and we certainly use that. They, they ranked the streets, but it, now, I didn't add up that column, but I'll bet that was over our bonding capacity, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at it right now. It's probably $19,000, $19 million.
Yeah.
I mean, every, if you look at it, I got it right here, you have it, too, but 1.2, 1, 1 million, 1.2, 2 million, 1.5, 1.1.
Actually, 10% more because there are fictional costs associated with bonding.
So I mean, I think if we're going to do this right, we go back and say, hey, guys, you got to redo your list.
But I think it's nice to have kind of what's on the horizon. Maybe it's not going to be done in five years, but at least you kind of have an idea that, you know, the sewer plant might have to be done in 10 years.
Oh.
I think that's what the intent is to do.
It's going to have to happen in 10.
But, as an example, because I mean, if it's not on the CAP, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily think about it, other than when we send it up.
You brought up a good example, I didn't interrupt the train. What are we going to do actually with this stupid train? Either we're going to, we're going to paint it, or we're going to get rid of it. We have to just make up our mind.
But, but we need to be aware that it's not in competition with really anything else except the fitness center. If we're going to run fundraising, it, it's in competition with the fitness center and the theater, not with the streets and the sewer and stuff like that.
Right, and it is, because it's, Brandon has to, you know, bring that forward. At the same time, something I just talked to him about, and I said, I didn't even realize that they am pickleball court lights, they have to be redone, and nothing was brought up about that on his list.
And I think they figured that was a...
And I just ain't going to come up with all that money.
I think they figured that was a $50,000.
No, it's about 60, 65.
Yeah, and we need to get it on the list. You're absolutely right.
Because that bunch, that one, a bunch of people is going to want the lights. But I mean, that, that's just me. I'm thinking we have to go back and say, guys, give us a list that's probable, we can work on the next three years, and then give us the list that you need in 10.
More than 10, actually. Well, I guess I, my question for some of these projects is, who has the responsibility? The street water sewer folks got together and they rated them. We may have other considerations, so are, are we voting just, if, if we're going to just totally rubber stamp theirs, which we might, then that's fine. But maybe, I mean, for instance, almost no matter how it ranks, a lot of people drive into town on whatever, Second Street East, down by the bank, maybe we, looking at the greater thing in, in the city, would upvote that or something. Maybe we were just indoor stairs. But it just concerns me that we voted as if the sewer and the streets are in competition, and they really aren't.
To me, I thought it was what the department heads thought were important that needed to be done, and they rated them or put them in the order they thought. So then I put them in the order that I thought was most important, not expecting that we were going to do them all in this X amount of years, but that we would break it down further at budget time when we know exactly what we can do.
Right. And I'll be honest, that's how I looked at it, too, I guess, that, you know, I don't have one in front of me, I guess, but that as a group, you know, you might want this, and I might want that, and somebody else wants that, and then that's what's the group would decide from that. So, I mean, either way, I don't know if we're thinking about doing a project that's coming here, we're going to be talking about that now with the budgets, right?
Can right away, can we? Can we right away?
I know, I know, and I said if, yeah.
I'm still worried about 7th Street.
Right. So, I mean, when we start doing the budget process next week, I guess, right? I mean, we can have the CAP there as a guide, and see what each department head thinks, and I guess, I mean, if you want to get together, I mean, we can do that, and whoever wants to come can come.
Well, I mean, I think it's important that everyone understands, including the department heads, because I'd have to look at what I just gave Stan, but I think they vote, they rank some to get done, that there is no way that we're going to get done.
Right.
So does that affect, if we, if we say we're going to do three streets between now and, roughly speaking, the mid 2030s, does that affect how they maintain those versus the other streets?
Sure.
It might.
And of course, and that's what kind of concerns me about all this. It looks like we've made some decisions, but they're decisions that can't happen.
Right.
And are we giving the proper indicators to the supervisors of what needs, you know, long-term maintenance versus what we're going to fix in seven years?
Right.
And in most cases, too, Amy, and you know this better, just as much as I would, when you were planning your budget, you're going to look at, "Well, how much is my maintenance costing me now? Is it better off buying something new?" Because I think I even remember where we had a tractor or something, and all of a sudden you could get through another year because we didn't like the tractor we were going to order, so it goes into the next year. It's just like, "Okay, then why didn't we think about that when we were doing this? That, hey, if you don't need the tractor this year, maybe it'll go two years, and we take it off the budget."
Those are important decisions at the time of budgeting.
Right.
You know, because maybe the maintenance hasn't been as bad as they thought, or maybe you get there and you think, "Well, wait a minute, right today, I've got a problem I need the money for."
Right.
But at the moment, I don't think we're giving the proper indicators to the supervisors about what we can accomplish. And as anybody said...
I would fully agree there, because we should be able to say, "Well, really, we're handing over, this is your budget for the next two, three years, and you list your streets from that." Or, you know, the sewer, or fire department, well, just because we need a water popper truck that's 20 years old, and, you know, how many times is it really good used, but do we need one right now just because we buy one every 20 years? So I mean, I would say definitely yes, I mean, we should be able to point out, "This is what you've really got for the next two, three years." But I don't want something getting broke down, too, that then it costs us a million dollars to fix it.
I mean, I don't really see any pieces of equipment that we have that would, are in dire straits, you know? But I know what you're saying. So I mean, if we, we meet next Wednesday with all the department heads and kind of pass this message on, I mean, typically we meet with the department heads, and then we probably will meet two more times after that.
Potentially, yeah.
To finalize the budget.
Mm-hmm.
The budget has to be finalized by, you need it by what, the end of July, January?
No, we have to have it pretty well tied down by March, in order to send it up to the Department of Management, because the county has to send out tax statements.
Right.
By March.
But I mean, in the past, I mean, we've always had everything done in January, so you could find...
February issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have the public meetings?
Yep, so we'll set the public hearing the beginning of March, for the public hearing to be after they mail it, because when they do the mailing, it says, "You're having the public hearing on your budget this date," so we'll be looking at that, but the tax statements are new this year.
Ah, okay.
So then after you have that meeting that you send out to everybody, then you still have to, so you'll do a public meeting for that, you'll set your public hearing for adopting the budget, which is due by the end of April.
Oh, they moved, didn't they?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, nice.
No, we have to still have it up by March 5th.
Right.
It sounds nice.
So, I mean, Amy, how do you want to proceed from here?
Well, maybe the first step is to say to the supervisors, now, the general obligation part mostly affects streets.
Right.
We could do as much sewer and water work as we want, but should we show to the supervisors, pull out the sewer ones, and are we happy with, are we happy with how the ordering is, and show it to Mike and say, you know, "Is this compatible with what you think needs to happen?" Same with Drew. I think Dean has a tough problem, there are streets that just aren't going to get done.
Right.
And we might, you know, we need to keep them in a list somewhere of never going to be funded projects, but I think we need to face up to that so that he can plan to do the, maybe he needs to do a different kind of maintenance on them, I don't know.
Yeah. So if we meet with the department heads next week and talk about what we just said, and then we can determine after that the next step, maybe? Would that be fair?
That'd be best.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
I agree, I like the idea of knowing what we got to spend going into it.
Yeah.
Simplify it, and I'm all in favor of that.
Yeah, I think of Division Street, I think of Vernon Road, those are the two worst that come to mind in my head right now, for streets.
Probably got pushed way back.
Vernon Road was just discussed with them the last.
No, I know, they, I mean, those to me are what seem to be the two worst streets. And that doesn't mean they are, but that's what I can remember. Division Street's kind of long, well, they're both probably similar in length, but I mean, if we based it off the price down here, those are easily probably two to four million dollar projects, I would think.
And getting higher.
Yeah, by the minute.
But how many times is being dug up already, Division Street up there by us?
There are places that are like this on that street.
So I mean, it says 1.1 on here, and I bet you that's way more now, now.
Right.
Wouldn't touch it for that.
Yeah. So, all right.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
Okay.
I think it's good to keep in mind, though, I think, and I wasn't involved in the CAP planning, I think they were told to kind of make a list of kind of big projects that you possibly envisioned, not necessarily ones that are, I think it's just a working document, so I mean...
Right. And we believe that was three years ago, so 2000?
It was two. I think you guys adopted at the beginning of 2022.
Number 10 and 11, we'll skip. Correct?
Yep, correct, he's not here, so we can't go to a closed session.
And then number 12, is discuss vacant public works director position.
Oops, applicant number four came up today and did a tour. I don't know if you guys want to reach out and have a second interview with him, if he'd be willing to come back up?
He...
If you guys had more questions for him.
Yeah, Gary talked to him, I didn't.
Yeah, we traveled shorting all the aspects of Cresco, school, streets, I mean, facilities, he checks all the boxes in my estimation. But yeah, we definitely need to have probably a second interview and...
Right. In person?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is a short week, why don't you get on to that?
Did you discuss any dates that would or would not work?
Not, nothing comes to mind off the top of my head. I mean, we got his number, we can call him back and set something up.
Mm-hmm.
Not if there's a possibility during the day, you know, for a brief one with everybody. I'm comfortable, but I don't...
It would hard to be do, it would hard to be, to do a closed session if we're open for business.
You have the conference room downstairs. I just don't want to push it out next week, because I mean, we're, you're looking at at least a month in until they get in here, so you're looking at the end of December.
And we would, I mean, it's going to be hard to do it tomorrow.
You can't do it tomorrow?
No.
24 hours?
But I mean, it would have to be after 7:00 PM tomorrow night, then, basically.
Correct.
So...
Yeah, we do have something else going tomorrow.
You do?
No, we do.
Oh, we do, yeah, yeah. So I guess then the next time would be Wednesday during the day downstairs?
When taking applicant number four around, what is, how long does he want to drive up here? It's open. Okay. It's open, yeah. I mean, it was important to, you know, for him to get a feel of the community with schools and stuff, and he's open to a lot of that, but...
Do you want to shoot for, like, are we open all day Wednesday? I mean, if it's open all day for everybody here, maybe we can reach out to him, and, you know, if 8 o'clock in the morning works better versus 3:00 AM, or 9:00 AM versus 3:00 PM, and I can do it, or Gary if you want to, or Nikki, I don't care.
I can reach out to him right away.
Okay. And then we can...
What about the other candidate? Did we want to have both of them up here at that time?
I guess that's up to the council. We've met him in person, we have, the rest of us have not met applicant number four in person. Is that something you want to do?
I guess I'm...
He's more vocal.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, is he, if Gary would be willing, I think somebody should take him around and say the same things that you said to applicant number four.
Well, I think I said that the last time, and I think you should do that anyway. What you do for one, you do for all.
Yeah.
We could see if he wants to do that, too, then.
But I guess that's the thing, I mean, are you guys interested in him? I mean, if you're not sure.
I mean, we haven't ruled anybody out yet, so...
Okay.
You okay with that, Gary?
That's my schedule.
Do you want his contact information to set up a time?
I can talk, we'll discuss it with you later.
Okay.
So you'll let us know on number four?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll go from there.
I'll call him right after here.
Okay.
Okay.
And then tomorrow, 10 o'clock here?
Yep.
Okay. That's the last item on the agenda.
Yep.
Move to adjourn, second.
Buska?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.